Right direction, we just pray Lord for uh right decisions to honor you and to do the good for the will of the people, which is honor you Lord this morning and give you praise in just in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Rodney, I appreciate it. It's from October twenty-sixth meeting. You guys have a chance with these over review them, any corrections?
I see none.
Nathan was absent, so he probably don't know what was on there to do. October twenty-sixth meeting.
They're moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Alright, Highway Department, Chris Winkler, morning sir.
Okay, uh I guess, did you say we had our highway meeting this morning?
Yes.
Okay. Seems like every meeting is a new adventure. So, just a.
A good adventure or a bad adventure?
I don't know right now, it's kinda, it's been a busy adventure, I'll tell you that. We do have a up here for the SJ, SJCA contract, and I actually didn't bring a copy of it with me. Um it's kinda the same thing, we signed up with uh Lock Mueller at basically at no cost, but they're just gonna provide a service as needed.
Right.
They're currently doing our bridge inspection, our, our yearly bridge inspection, so uh we just thought that we wanted to have that open line of communication with them to, to be able to contact them whenever problems arise.
Right, yeah, I mean, here's your bet at all. You say you don't have a contractor, you do?
I didn't bring the copy of it with me, I can search around on my email and find it, but.
Well, wait, this uh.
Yeah, I think I sent one to, yeah, I'd sent, I'd sent it to you guys and forgot to bring my copy.
There you go. You guys have any thoughts or anything on this? I don't have any trouble doing that and reaching out and having them reach out to us and then we could reach back out to them, so, I guess we'll look for a motion to approve SJCA as a vendor, um it's like ten twenty, twenty twenty-one to ten twenty twenty-three is the, is the uh contract dates. I'll look for a motion to approve.
They're moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh project updates, um the Kenneburg Road project, I think the concrete paving is now officially put off until, till the spring, so we're gonna winter through, through that corridor on gravel, they're currently putting gravel on it, they've got a little bit of bridge work to do, but they'll probably mid-December when they quit, that'll be opened up to through traffic, uh but it will not be concrete paved. It is cement stabilized and it'll have uh the, the gravel on it and it'll be opened up and they will come back, I believe, March to finish up on it, but it got too late in the year to put the concrete, concrete down. And. Have, I guess I didn't have this on the schedule, I'm not a very professional meeting guy, if you guys haven't noticed that.
You're doing fine.
I'm used to just getting the work done, I guess. I'll get better. So we got our, our uh grant for the Community Crossings for the Glendale Road project and I, I think everybody had seen that, but to be able to proceed with that grant and take advantage of it, we gotta get uh signatures from the three commissioners and uh it's a signing authority uh paper and I brought that along to present to you guys.
Yep, we did receive, well, it was a million dollar grant, but we had received some money in twenty-one, so it wasn't quite a million, but it was really close.
Nine hundred and eighty, I've got it actually. Uh I believe it is nine hundred and eight thousand dollars, one hundred and thirty forty-seven cents.
That's okay, and uh so we're much appreciated to get that Community Crossings grant, this has gone towards the Montgomery Bridge project, right?
Yeah.
This is the Montgomery Bridge?
No, this is the Glendale Road.
Okay, Glendale Road, okay.
Glendale Road.
Yeah.
The, the next project we're gonna do is we're gonna apply for a grant for the Montgomery Bridge, we're working on that currently. We've been working on it for a while, but we haven't been officially able to apply for the grant and haven't seen it, we're hoping to get it.
Okay. Sounds good, I appreciate you guys hardworking on that grant in order and getting it, so good job.
I'd said Phil, he's not here, but I told you guys that was the Glendale Road grant, that was one of the big things that he had worked on before.
Get done.
He left, yeah. So when I got the congratulations, I sent him a screenshot of it, told him thanks.
Yeah. So I got a, I've got a sign, a signing authority information sheet here for all three commissioners, um let's look for a motion to approve that.
They're moved.
Second. Motion by Nathan Gabhart, second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, um I've got two LPA invoice vouchers, which that's not on there, um but they're both from Lock Mueller, one of them's for the Kenneburg Road project and the other one is for uh the bridge on Kenneburg Road.
Okay.
I gotta present them to you for signature.
Yep. Alright, I got two LPA claim vouchers here from Lock Mueller Group, one in the amount of forty-nine thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-six cents with eighty percent reimbursable, thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and seventy-seven cents. And then I got a second one from Lock Mueller Group in the amount of eighty-two thousand sixty-five dollars and twenty-four cents with eighty percent reimbursable, sixty-five thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and nineteen cents. Look for a motion to approve, both LPA claim vouchers, single signature on that.
They're moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead Chris.
Okay, and then uh we've got the, the annual bids awarded and uh I'd move that we, I guess I don't move nothing, but I guess we uh, we wanna accept the bids if all the requirements are met from the, the bidding. On the stone, we got Cave Quarries, Rogers Group and US Aggregates to accept all. Uh the stone delivered to the township is Cave Quarries, Rogers Group, US Aggregates, accept all. The HDP pipe, plastic pipe, uh we've had a bid of Civilcon and J. Kemp, accept Civilcon and J. Kemp. Metal pipe, uh Civilcon, we accept that. Concrete and masonry products, uh they accept the bids from Jones and Sons, JJ's Concrete. Uh flowable fill, again, is they accept both, JJ's Concrete, Jones and Sons, sand and gravel, uh we accept the bid of JJ's Concrete, Jones and Sons, Rogers Group. Tiling, uh tiling various county roads, uh J. Kemp, we wanna accept that. Calcium chloride would be Great Lakes Chloride, accept that one. And concrete box and culverts, uh we wanna accept the JJ's Concrete and Jones and Sons.
You guys have any questions for the annual bids for Chris?
No.
No.
If not, I'd like to accept the uh the Highway Department's uh recommendations for the bids for twenty-two, look for a motion to approve those, what they, what they reviewed and for the annual bids.
They're moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, oh you got Chris?
Yeah, that's all I got.
Alright, I'll let you off the hook then.
Okay, thanks.
Appreciate it, thanks Chris. Alright, Airport Manager, Resignation, morning sir.
Good morning, good to see you all.
See ya.
Uh wanted to talk to Patty, uh says we need to make it a matter of formal public record, um notify you all that uh effective end of day, December first, um I'm going to resign from my position as Airport Manager, wife has taken a new position out west in central Oregon, who will be trekking across the country first of December. With that, with that said, I, I think probably have to make a formal motion to uh accept that, but we do have, we've already gone through the process with the Airport Board of Commissioners and have found a new candidate, um that they recommend that you fulfill my position, recommend that you accept, uh and the gentleman's name is Chris Rhodes, uh he's uh a retired, recently retired, um fairly young retiree from United Airlines. Original, born and raised Pike County, Pike Central, they, he and his wife recently moved back to that area, he's got a lot of similar background that, that I have, he is a licensed airframe and power plant mechanic from the FAA as well, and um he spent, I think, twenty, twenty-plus years in the Air Force. So we think he's a, overall the board and myself think he's a good candidate to fill the position and we'll, we'll learn the process, um tentatively, we have him set to start if everything works out next Monday, uh so that we have a two-week transition time so that I can get him up to speed on everything that we're doing. So, I can give you more information as necessary, but uh just wanted to, wanted to let you all know, and you know, from my perspective, it's been, been a pleasure working with you all and getting to know everybody and, and moving forward with all the work that we've done at the airport.
That reciprocates back to me too, back to you, because
Yeah.
you've done an excellent job out there and I appreciate all the work you've done, you've done a lot since you've been there and good, good working with you.
Thank you, yep, appreciate it. If we don't accept the resignation, then you have to stay, right? Yeah, I don't know how that works with.
Well, it's been a pleasure working with you, been, you've been very knowledgeable, very professional, and, and you've made a very complicated topic very easy for Commissioners to understand, so thank you for all you've done for Davies County.
Thank you.
For the Auditor's Office, I'd like to add too, as far as um the contribution that Eric made in working with us and with audits and accounting, it was a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, I, having the support from the Auditor's Office has been crucial, um because there was a lot to get my, you know, head wrapped around at the beginning, so it's, it's, I appreciate all the help and everything everybody's done to make my transition into the position go so smoothly.
Yeah, I guess you guys, will you guys send a formal letter for, for reappointment then, back to the Commissioners then?
What's that?
For uh Chris Rhodes, will you guys send a formal letter back to the Commissioners then, or?
I don't think we, we've sent emails back and forth,
Okay.
but I can get you a, a formal letter if that.
Yeah, it would help for the records, yeah.
Yeah. I could do that, I'll, I'll get that out.
Which responsibility is it to hire? Is it the board or is it us?
They uh, it, it's just our appointment, right?
I, the way I understand it, and clarify with Patty, uh the board, the Airport Board makes a recommendation, basically, they do the hiring and the firing, but I think for a matter of public record, we need the Commissioners to
Appoint them.
appoint probably the position to, to be above board, it sounds like.
Yeah, if we could go ahead and make a motion to accept their recommendation, I think it'd be one of the best.
I think, I think so too, I'm just saying, as long as we get a formal letter.
Send a letter, yeah, and I, I'll send that along, I'll get that out today.
Thank you and best wishes.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate that.
I'll be around until the, uh the first at least and then.
We could be with you for at least a month now, yeah. Thank you for everything Eric, appreciate it. Alright, I've got a resignation letter here from the Board of Aviation to uh for Eric Siebler to resign, get a motion to approve that.
They're moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart. Second, second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then the Board of Aviations have also recommended Chris Rhodes as the replacement for the uh, the pretended out the airport, look for a motion to approve that.
They're moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, thanks Eric.
Thank you all.
Thanks Eric.
Thank you.
Morning, got a CASA grant application, Mr. English, morning.
Hey. This is the grant that we apply for every year um to help fund our program, um the matching grant is under the Circuit Court, matching grant goes to um basically just help us to recruit and retain volunteers, um and to also to take care of the program and, and use the monies to help fund the program. Um the capacity grant is basically for training, for recruiting, for maintaining our current volunteers and um the only one that's the matching is the very first grant, which is the, um now, it's from National CASA.
That's for twelve thousand eight ninety-four?
Yes.
For matching, yeah.
Yes.
What was the second grant, that you got a matching out one or is it different, is it very?
It's a different one, but it's not a matching, it's for, it's capacity building, it's to help um recruit and train.
Okay.
And um actually retain the volunteers that we currently have.
Do you have anything for Mr.?
No, it's great program, big fan.
So, look for a motion, I got two uh, I got two applications here for grants, one in the amount for matching grant is twelve thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars and the other one runs from January one, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, look for a motion to approve both grants.
They're moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries, appreciate it. Alright, Janice Williams, morning.
I think my first thing is the purchase agreement with the note ink.
Yep.
In the Indiana Secretary of State's office. I, you guys all have copies of it?
Yes.
Okay. And this is um something I had been working on for a while, um there was about nineteen counties that did not have electronic poll pads and the Indiana Secretary of State's office um has offered to purchase those for us so that we could all have them, which is, I think, a great thing because they're um, if we ever decided we wanted to go to vote centers, we have to have those to do that, um that was one of the reasons, I knew they were very expensive to, you know, get them and, and they're going to pay for them and then we would have to eventually, after the time period is up, we would have to start paying like the maintenance and software agreements, which um it does have that in that estimate, but like in, I think you have to budget it in twenty twenty-two, um it would be, the cost of the contract would be like five thousand fifty dollars um for our county to have to take up, you know, once that initial period was over. Um but the poll pads, I think they will save us, you know, on costs because we will not have to print those poll books that we print, and I know if you've ever been to vote, which obviously most of you have, you know, we're flipping through those books trying to find your name and
Right.
sometimes I know when I was a poll worker, you know, we would have a voter maybe couldn't see the line as well and maybe would sign on the wrong line and these electronic poll books will keep that from happening and they scan your license and then it brings up all your information.
One signal line for signature then, yeah.
Um and I talked with someone yesterday about these, you know, this contract, just to make sure, I had a couple of questions, but um they said it's more accurate like for recounts and things like that too, if we, I've been through one recount, that was when I first became there, um you know, and they have to look through all this stuff, but.
You think in the near future you will have voting centers then?
I would like to, I think that they're a good thing because so many people, like vote centers are where you could go to any polling location to vote.
Right, vote, yeah.
Um all the ballots would be on the machine, and so I always kind of say, like if you worked at Crane for instance, but you lived in Washington and it was like five-thirty and you can't get to the polling place in time, you could go to maybe Oden and vote.
Right.
Um so you can denture locations down and then you can go anywhere, and those electronic poll books keep you, like you have to have wifi for those when you do vote centers, you don't have to if you don't have the vote center, but you have to have the wifi so that they're all connected and you can tell, you know, that like you voted at whatever precinct.
Right, so you don't get
So you don't have someone duplicating, going to another, so, I think those are a great thing, I know a lot of counties are doing that, so, but this was one of the things that we had to have in order to, to go that direction, so.
How many machines, you say it was again? I was looking through the real quick.
Twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty-seven, I think.
Twenty-seven, okay.
Yeah, twenty-seven, and the units were fifteen hundred apiece, and then you can see the different breakdowns of um the things that they have. I did notice on the Exhibit A, they have my billing address as three seventy-nine, it's supposed to be seven thirty-nine, I talked with someone yesterday and I was gonna call the Secretary of State's office too, but um person I talked to yesterday said we could probably draw a line through that and just write the correct number and then maybe one of you um initial that, that it's changed. Um and this starts the date we received the equipment and it goes for three years. I know there's a lot of pages to it, so, I don't know if you guys have any questions about any of it?
You know the anticipated life of the equipment?
I'm not for sure, I know they do updates and things like that throughout the time period, kinda like our voting machines too, you know, we, we did updates and, and that's part of this.
I'm just wondering how often we'll have to replace the equipment.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I know he told me yesterday when I talked to him that we're not like bound by that, if after the three years we decide we don't even want to use them, we don't have to, but um you know, if we stop paying for them, obviously they wouldn't be ready for an election if they
Right, it'll be updated.
I can't imagine wanting to go back to the paper after, you know, using them, but.
Well, they should last for a long time, no more than what they're gonna be used to.
Yeah, yeah, cause you only use them, you know, a couple of
As long as they're maintainable and updatable, they should be able to last for significant time.
I don't think I've ever heard, have you heard anybody say? I can check on that for you if you want me to.
I'm trying to find that, where'd they get your?
There's a couple of places for signatures, I also am on the Council's meeting for tomorrow just to kind of explain to them.
Okay.
You know, that they will be a cost eventually of this.
Uh we're trying to stream on everything and everybody wants information faster and faster all the time, I know.
And it's also a thing, like if we did go to vote centers, we can like watch things up in our office, like to see what's going on out in the, at the polling locations, which we really can't do now, you know, they call us if there's something going on, but you're also supposed to be able to tell like how busy one location is as opposed to another and, you know, maybe tell somebody if you go to this one, you know, it's not as busy.
Let them know that
Yeah.
could go vote here if you needed to, yeah.
Is the only downside that there's less physical locations, or are there any downside?
I don't know any downsides of it, I haven't really heard anybody complain about them, most people seem to like them, um but you do have less locations, so someone that's used to voting in a certain place and that likes that may not like having to go, you know, to just, like for instance, if we did one in Bar, you know, in like Montgomery, someone from like Bar Two may not wanna, I don't know, it's not that far, and you try to place them in, you know, locations that are convenient for people, so.
I'm just trying to find where your uh, my address is wrong, I don't see it there.
Um it's on that Exhibit A, the very la, next to the last page, I think.
Have to cross out the P.O. box, is that what you're saying, or?
Um if you just cross out the three seventy-nine and just put seven thirty-nine there and they said, just to initial that.
Seven thirty-nine, so they just transposed it?
Mm-hmm. And then I found there was two places, like for signatures, that page right before that, it'd be page eight for the note ink. And then there was page sixteen, I believe, on the other one. That was for the purchase agreement part, page sixteen. I don't know if you want to sign the original one, Mike, I have the original one here.
You guys, gentlemen, have any, any thoughts or anything on these machines?
Sound like a good idea.
Ron?
Well, it sounds good, transitions are always hard, but they're usually worth it.
On the backside of that. Please, okay, yep, I can sign both of them. Thank you. Alright, just look for uh, motion to approve note agreement for a grant, or I guess it's kind of a grant.
Yeah, it was through the election security grant, I believe.
In the amount of seventy-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. This is uh, contract for three years is what it is. Don't have any?
I'll make the motion.
Check the motion.
They're moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. These real quick. Like this one is a single signature, they're both single signatures also. Go ahead Janice.
Okay.
Sorry.
You're fine. Um, this is something I brought up, I believe at the last meeting, I can't remember, um the Davies County Council districts where we were um checking into whether we needed to redistrict or not, um I did wanna know, on the first page in District Four, talking about transposing numbers earlier, I had transposed numbers, I think I had eight thousand three hundred nine, it's actually eight thousand thirty-nine, I had it correct on the um second page showing the deviation amounts though, so everything is still um six percent, so um I don't know, I think you probably have copies of all that.
Yep.
If not, I have extra, and I know I, I think I talked about this last time, there was a lady that contacted me, her name was Kelsey Kaufman, um I believe she worked on that DePaul University program thing the last time, which was in like two thousand and ten, she called me and um because on that website of DePaul University, our um districts have not been updated.
Right.
So they showed that they were way off, well, when she called me, um I told her what they actually were now, so she took those numbers back and she sent me an email and told me that we were right, the population deviation from the County Council is six percent, and she said it was one of the best in the state, I thought I mentioned that last time, but I didn't have a copy of the email, so I didn't know if any of you wanted to see that or not, but I did bring that with me.
I do appreciate, they have updated it then?
They did not update the website, I don't know that they can, um but she did update the information she had, and she was going to tell them um that information, so.
At least they're aware of it now, that's good.
Yeah, yeah, cause it's Yeah, yeah, cuz it is off if you look at that, it's not the same as what, what we have now. So, and I ta- I, I talked with the Indiana Election Division yesterday and they said even though if we don't change anything, they, we still have to do an ordinance showing that we're recertifying those things are correct and that we're not changing them, so.
What was your P O box again? I just wanna make sure I get it right.
Seven thirty-nine.
Seven thirty-nine, I thought it was, I just wanna make sure if I wrote it down. There's this back, Janice, can we just copy back? On the county council, uh, districts, you wanna leave them the same then?
Ours, I mean, I think we're okay, it's because we're in that deviation, that has to be ten percent or under, so, or at six percent.
Six percent, yeah. I know you guys looked that over, just wanna make sure. Are you guys comfortable with leaving those the same?
Yep.
I have no issue with the council.
Okay. Look for a motion to leave the county council districts the same for election.
So moved.
Motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor. Motion carries.
Janice, maybe we'll present a ordinance that end, the next meeting if that's acceptable.
And you've got one here for the, also for the, uh, county council also. And the commissioners.
Commissioners.
Commissioners still, they got District One, Two, and Three, which is what we got now. They're all divided by townships. I don't know if I really wanna change anything. Since the whole county votes on us, I don't know if there's any, any reason to do it, but, you know, whatever you guys think.
Well, I, I would bet you two are kinda like me, that you feel the current seats are in very capable hands. But should we decide not to run, what you have to look at is the potential candidates that could file. And District One is a pool of about eighteen thousand, District Two is eight thousand, District Three's a little over six thousand. So if you'd even out the population, uh, your numbers would tell you, you may end up with better candidates.
The one thing, but two things on that end of it, too, is the population's right here in Washington, right? So we start pulling Washington township out into like District Three or something, or even out into Beale.
Well, basically.
You could possibly have two people that live in the city of Washington serving on this board.
No, because the city of Washington would be District One. Everything else would be outside of the city.
And just a little bit, just right here in the same population.
I mean, there's different, different ways of looking at it.
Township.
Townships, yeah, it would be right here in the same townships. I don't know, I'm just, just food for thought, I just wanted, you know, make sure we get good representation.
I just, I just want a discussion, I think, you know, you want, you want, to me, to wanna give the taxpayer the best opportunity.
Right.
And the districts are population-wise out of whack.
They are, I mean, for sure, but to get the best person that lives in, in those districts, you only, you wanna make sure you're not just pulling from everything down here in one, one area. You're actually reaching up to the rest of the communities up north and down south.
I checked, um, actually yesterday with one of the people at the Indiana Election Division to see if we actually had to change those, cuz I wanted to make sure. They said we don't have to change them, um, because they're not, everybody votes on them, so it's not like you're, you know. I know the one is a lot, you know, and that, but I think that's because all of Washington is in there. That's why I think it's so high.
Yeah, my sense is it's probably been disproportionate since eighteen sixteen, so we've, we've done pretty well since then. So, yeah, I'd suggest we just leave them, leave them the same.
Or leave them the same, I guess we did a motion on that, so.
I would just close it by saying if you wanna leave it, that's fine, but I'm competitive by nature. And in simple terms, I'm competing against about seventeen thousand other people, whereas you're competing against eight and Michael's competing against just under seven.
We gotta keep it easy for Michael, so I'd like to just keep it the same. We don't want him to have too much competition.
Yeah. I wish I didn't have too much competition.
I don't think he's ever had any, so, yeah.
Just the first time in, I guess.
That's the problem with politics, but let's move on.
Yeah, move on, so. If we're gonna leave them the same, I'm guess we need a motion, so we'll just move on then.
Janice, just to clarify, um, if we're leaving them the same, we still wanna clarify what the districts are for council and commissioners, is that correct?
Yeah, and I talked to them yesterday at the Indiana Election Division, they said no matter what you do, you have to recertify or at least show on your ordinance, you know, what you're doing.
We will present, um, those districts within an ordinance at the next meeting.
And he also said that you can do two ordinances or you can combine them. He said a lot of people do two, just to, you know, clarify it. But I, I know that I've seen some with just one ordinance, so I think it's kind of.
Does this come up because of the census that's done, every ten years this comes up?
Yes.
Sounds good.
I won't have to worry about it again.
I don't wanna have to worry about it either.
Somebody else's problem. Someone else's issue.
Yeah, so I guess, Grant, you'll work with Janice on that.
Yeah, this is the first time I've had to do this, so.
Well, Grant, you'll work with Janice on those ordinances then?
Yeah. We'll have either one or two ordinances at the next meeting for your approval.
I'd recommend one, keep it simple.
Sounds good. Anything else, Janice?
I don't think so. I just wanna thank you guys for working on this with me, I know.
Thank you for your.
They haven't done this before, so.
I appreciate you jumping on it, cuz it's been a lot of work for everybody and especially for you, so I appreciate it.
Janice has done an excellent job.
Thank you, thanks for your help.
Have a good day. All right, Scott Sneer.
Morning, sir. First thing on agenda, um, come to ask for some funds out of the Commissioners Building Fund. What we're looking at doing, we're going through a government program to trade our current lawnmower in on a four-wheel drive model. And our lawnmower was recently purchased two thousand thirteen from a dealer in town. And we're looking to trade that in, uh, really need the four-wheel drive option for the wintertime, pushing snow. So, um, we're going with the same series, so that all of our implements that we now have will fit the new mower. So I'm asking to use, uh, seven thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars seventy-six cents out of the Commissioners Building Fund to make that purchase, make that trade.
And that's through Hudson's, through the government program we're in?
Yes.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
No.
Ron?
No, I'm. Scott's doing his homework on it, just through the government program, I have no issue.
I'll look for a motion to, uh, go ahead, yes.
I just blessed him, sorry.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, he made the motion, I'll second. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the, uh, this is for John Deere, let's see, John Deere X seven thirty-eight signature. Created value, the difference is seven thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Motion by Nathan Gabhart, a second, second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries, and that came out of the commissioners.
Right, four-three-two oh one.
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Next on the agenda is the assignment of the ADA Director for Davis County.
Right.
Michael reached out and wanted to know if our department could fill that position. Wanted to understand it's a, it's a requirement, cuz we're receiving grants. So Rodney Muller has agreed to accept that title. If there is training to do, so we both will be going to Indianapolis for that training, so we can both get trained on that. Most Michael has to say about this situation they're in.
Yeah, I reached out to, we've been trying to fill our Title VI and our ADA coordinators. And so I reached out to Scott and he said he, between him and Rodney, they could fill that position, so it sounded like Rodney wants to come on hand and come, come ahead on up. But we do need ADA coordinator to keep all of our federal funding coming in for NDOT purposes and stuff like that. And we still need the ADA director, too. Lock Miller Group said they would update our ADA, however they got up the car, so these guys will have to go, I think it's a one-day seminar to get certified, right?
Yes.
Correct? It will be Indianapolis, so there'll be mileage and definitely have to pay for that, get them up in the back. I've done the same thing earlier. So, you guys have anything for Scott or Rodney?
No, it sounds great, but yeah, it's, it's required and appreciate you guys taking that on.
And, uh, I said I don't think there'd be a lot, a lot to do with it after we get you guys certified and, and Lock Miller Group's gonna update everything for us. But there will be things to do periodically to keep, keep things up to date, so. But if you guys need anything at all, when that happens, just reach out to Lock Miller Group and they'll help us through everything we need, so I appreciate it. But I guess I'll look for a motion to approve Rodney Muller for, uh, the ADA coordinator.
So moved.
Got the motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Appreciate Rodney for stepping up, taking, taking that on.
Thank you, guys.
All right, got charitable donations. We, uh, we get requests every year for charitable donations and, uh, we've got a line item. We used to have a cap at one hundred and twenty thousand dollars on that line item. We had one hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars awarded, that's what we had set on our budget to award for, for twenty twenty-one. And actually had, that's set to be for twenty twenty-two, um, but we did get a budget cut on that line item from one twenty to one, one hundred and one thousand dollars. Is that correct, Patty?
Yes, that is correct.
And so we're gonna be about twelve thousand nine hundred dollars short on those, uh, on that budget. But we have to figure out where, where we're gonna pull that money out at and how to compensate if we're gonna compensate. So just open for discussion right now for twenty twenty-year award. Try to, we need to try to make a decision fairly soon, does these guys have to?
Set the list.
Yeah. We'll have to get these, let these entities know what their budget is for twenty twenty-two.
So on these twenty-one award amounts, do we know which ones, um, were higher than the two thousand and twenty?
So I think they're all the same, I'm pretty sure, did anything, well, I think there was one change, maybe twenty twenty.
Award amount to what they request?
No, from what we gave them in twenty versus twenty-one?
I think they're really close, they may have changed one item, I don't remember though.
We had that information, but we didn't compile it in the.
It was really close, we didn't have to change it much.
It probably was in the.
A lot of those, a lot of those on that charitable donations are, had been fixed numbers for a long time.
So it's a ten percent decrease? Well, just throwing out, just talking, um, we could decrease ten percent across the board. Maybe it could decrease one by a big chunk. Ten percent across the board. And again, I'm just throwing out, how do we make, meet this gap, we either find new dollars or we decrease for everybody or decrease for one or two?
We're, we're up against the wall a little bit on timeframe. I know Ron had reached out to the other entity and to talk about maybe getting this back to the number that we're at, one thirteen nine.
Yeah.
But, uh, I, I did see some of those emails and there's not been a, uh, recommendation if they're gonna wanna step up yet or not, so. But we are on a time, kind of a time crunch, just so these guys can get their budgets figured out for twenty twenty-two.
I think at the last meeting, we talked about the museum and, uh, what, Four Rivers? And that brought it in line to cut those two?
The way I see it, I mean, the people down at the Historical Society have done a tremendous job. But we've also spent a tremendous amount of money down there. We always said that we're doing, bring that back to thirty-five thousand at one point and that, so that's, that's what jumped off the paper at me when I seen that last meeting. Was, you know, if we need a fifteen thousand dollar cut, that might be the place to do it. If we wanna do it this year, I don't know, cuz, you know, either do a ten percent cut or just cut one out for now and then maybe next year we'll get our budget raised again and go back to the fifty thousand if we do, if we do cut one or another one. But, uh, the foundation said they would look into it, but they have not gave us, uh.
Tell you what, to make it, to make this easy, let's do this. I, I know, um, another, um, opportunity, I guess we could say, as far as funding the museum, um, if the foundation isn't able to, to keep them whole. So I'm, I'm confident we can keep the, if we cut the historical museum, I'm confident we can keep them whole in the private sector. So that would probably be, that'd be where I'd lean toward. And if the foundation doesn't, then I, I know another organization that will.
Take them off the museum and balance that you're short, take off Four Rivers. And I've been out to Four Rivers and, and for what they're wanting to do, I think extra money is needed this year, but it's kinda the same thing. My personal opinion is the foundation should take over all this.
Well, I think, I don't think we, I don't think we raised Four Rivers what the request was, we just keep it the same, nineteen thousand.
I think somebody needs to get out there and see what they need and study it a little bit more. And so we have to keep them at that.
Yeah.
But I'm saying they still have a need. And I don't, you know, I mean, we tag these charitable contributions. I don't see any of these, and I know by all definition they're charities, but they provide vital services to the community, I'd hate to do without them. But again, I think the way we structured, my goal would be to get them off the property tax roll and we could always look at funding through edit if we had to. If we can't get the private sector, the foundation take on. But again, the foundation was set up to kinda do things such as, and I know that for a fact. We probably need to have a conversation when this contract comes up again, to just set some guidelines on what's expected.
I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be opposed to funding this out of edit, if that's what everybody chooses to do, then we can just, we could actually do that through the foundation, out of our edit funds.
But for today, we just make the cuts, prove it, so everybody knows what the budget was.
Same, cuz I mean, Historical Society, they'd know when that cut was, could be coming in the future and I guess it's here, but like you said, if we can make them whole with other, other avenues.
Yeah, between the foundation and the other thought I have, I, I know we can make them whole, uh, for two thousand and twenty-two. To buy it sometime, so, I don't know if that, like twelve-nine is what I wrote down, I don't know if that's the exact number or?
It's, uh, whatever, whatever gets, it gets, to get us at the budget. We're a hundred and one, we can't spend more than a hundred and one.
So, is it?
Reduce, reduce them by twelve-nine.
What, is that the number?
Yeah.
So reduce them by twelve-nine and, and, and I'll, I'll personally ensure that they, they're made whole.
Thank you. So I look for a motion to approve the charitable donations for twenty twenty-two. And then the Historical Society, we will be reduced by twelve thousand nine hundred dollars, whatever that figure is. Figure that out real quick.
I'll put you at one oh one.
Michael?
Yeah.
Uh, for clarity, you are using the amounts in the twenty twenty-one award column?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, so that's what the commissioners approved. The twenty twenty-one award year is what we approved for twenty twenty-two. And so, um, the, the Davis County Historical Society goes from fifty thousand down to thirty-seven thousand one hundred dollars. The rest of the, uh, award amounts will be the same. All right, I look for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart, second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, holiday schedule for twenty twenty-two, you guys had a chance to look that over? Calendar, both, everything look good for you guys?
No issue.
Both done?
Well, Michael, we did not, um, add the janitor.
That's why I was looking in there.
I sent an email to that with some of the research that we had done. Federal holiday list has it on there, the state holiday list does not.
Does not, okay. So no other changes to the commissioners' calendar or commissioners' holiday schedule, but for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We just passed it, but one thing I would like is to consider in two thousand and twenty-two is to bring back the, um, the one or, one or two evening meetings, we used to go different areas.
Right.
And the turnout was always great, forty, fifty people. So we can discuss that down the road, but having maybe one evening meeting, either on mid, north, south, I always, I always enjoyed those.
I always enjoyed it, too, getting out and counting. I always enjoyed it, too, getting out and on it.
Maybe it's time to do that.
Okay, sounds good. All right, back to the, uh, Board of Commissioner appointments, it's always fun every year, kind of track everybody down.
Getting easier each year.
It is getting easier, it looks like, we're down to two pages instead of three. So we got appointments for ABC, that Alcohol Beverage Commission, APC Advisory Plan Commission, we got three appointments there. Two appointments for the BZA, two appointments for the Community Corrections Advisory. Um, one appointment for Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council. Two for Longevity Pay Commission, one for Montgomery Area Plant Commission, two for West Fox Park. Pita Boa, we got Redevelopment Commission, and one for Pita Boa, one for Redevelopment, one for SIDC. Then we got four for Visitors Bureau, and then one for BZA, and then one for West Create Authority. And we all sit on Saltway, Davis County Community and Redevelopment Commission. Bearing his board. So does anybody want to take some of these and call and see whether they're still up to par?
What was your question, I'm sorry.
We got all these appointments, we need to contact these people and make sure they're still on there, so I didn't know.
Yeah, we just usually just, um.
Want to split some of these up.
We used to take a page each, but now.
Now we're down to two, so I guess I'm out, you guys.
I'll take, I'll take a page. Give me a page, I'll take a page.
Which page you want? I'll give you your choice, seeing I'm the new guy.
There you go, look at them.
I'll just take this page, I don't even know who's on it, so you take that one off.
All right, good deal, you, you guys want to check on those, try to those done by the end of the year.
Mr. Morris, are you willing to serve? Security authority for three years?
I, I think I already am, um, you had a question about tourism?
Well, on the museum funding, uh, and I appreciate, I asked Joe to come talk about, uh, the benefit of the museum.
I've been texting.
And what's going on. Okay.
You're welcome.
I get it, for a city park and, you know, I wasn't prepared to talk this up, but I did.
Probably need to come up here.
Uh, my name is Joe Morris, I'm just, I'm a Congressman. I'm in support of the museum, I think Becky and that team are phenomenal, I think we have a wonderful story to tell. Um, I can report to you that, um, I had a board approval to, um, fund the museum for, on the blue signs out on the interstate, we're adding the attraction sign. And we're gonna put the museum out there, we're gonna fund that, along with Corning Irish Heritage, they don't know it yet, um, and Ville Creek Theater, of course, our office. And we're gonna do a two-year commitment, so they can get their feet on the ground, and if they want to continue to support that advertising effort, marketing effort, we're gonna jumpstart it for them, um, but I just, I think a lot of, uh, that team, I think they have a story to tell, I think we have a great story to tell. And what, for me, to have them out on the interstate as an exit sign, was really, uh, to create a pathway into our downtown heart, the city and the county, right? So, um, um, I, I fully support them, I hate to hear cuts, but I understand the challenges you have in managing this, and being prudent in your efforts and fiscal responsibility, but thank you, Nathan. Um, you do a lot, and I appreciate it, and hearing you say that, ensuring that, that means a lot. I, I haven't even talked to them, I gave them a parade wave, um, said I needed to talk to you, but I never had a chance to. Um, I'm fully in support of what we can do to help their efforts, um, in terms of these appointments, I heard tourism, uh, verifying who's on the board. Is that right, Michael?
Well, I just got one appointment on there, I think we got.
Uh, there's four.
Oh, it's four, four on that one.
Yeah, um, if you need me to confirm that they're still serving, yes, but in terms of their commitment, um, I can't speak on their behalf.
Yeah, we'll just have, we'll just reach out, that's what we usually do every year, just reach out.
Some of them want to continue, some of them would say I've done enough, so we'll just see.
Yeah, so.
I, I just want to say that Joe's, we tried to get signs on the interstate forever, and I know Mayor Wellman worked on it for probably four or five years, and, uh, was getting conflicting information, but Joe got it done, so I want to commend you on that.
Well, it all started with the, the multiple requests I had, when I'm gonna bring in a Chick-fil-A or a Cracker Barrel here, and, um, I really felt like, how about we get blue exit signs first, and, um, and I have to compliment our partners in Hucks, when they joined our community, um, and joined the Chamber of Commerce. They wanted a ribbon cutting, and I made a deal, said, hey, give me a blue sign, and ran, but it was a joke, but they started it, and then our other partners, like Casey's, Arby's, and the others stepped up and, and did it, so we're gonna expand that, we're also gonna expand on the camping side, so you'll see, um, um, that sign go up, so we're gonna expand upon that, I think it's essential, and it's a great starting point, go hangin' fruit, right?
Right.
Just to get that started, and, um, we'll take it from there and see what we can develop out of that.
Starting from the interstate, it's starting to look like a community.
Right.
So, thank you for that.
You're welcome, thank you.
I appreciate all your efforts, I mean, you even jumped right in for the, our, uh, innkeeper's tax, and got that taken care of, too, which has been long overdue.
Well, it wasn't one, just me, it was several people, and it starts with the people here, uh, certainly the, the council. And our representatives in Basler and Lindar helped, and we are good friends around the state, that I had relationships with, that really stepped up for us. I know it seemed like a big jump, but, you know, in all the conversations.
I know it's a big jump, but it's been, how long has it been since we raised it, you know what I mean?
I'm, yeah, true, true, right.
When you're taking the timeframe, it's not, not that big of a job.
True, so, uh, I didn't come here to take the Mistress' time, um, I just, thank you again, Nathan.
You're welcome.
And I'm sure they'll appreciate that, anything I do to help.
All right, thanks a lot.
See you guys, thank you.
Joe. All right, Commissioners, you guys have anything else for anything?
No, great job.
Okay, um, I do have Ken Matthews here this morning, he did ask to give a little bit of information this morning on himself. Ken, if you want to come up to the podium and just give your name, and just a little bit of information that you want to give us this morning?
I just recently moved back to the area, um, I was a criminal investigator for the Internal Revenue Service for twenty-something years. And so with that background, I thought.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, I just wanted to make myself available, if there's any, um, thing I can do to help out around here, I mean, I, um, while I worked downtown Indianapolis, I lived in Johnson County, a little town called Trafalgar. I was also on the town council there for seventeen years, and president of the town council most of those years, so a little bit of involvement with government work, but, uh, more so as an IRS special agent, which actually is a special agent. Did criminal investigations, undercover work and so forth for IRS, and, um, and then went down to Georgia where the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center is, as a leading instructor for the Criminal Investigator Training Program. And, uh, did that for a couple of years, unfortunately, federal law enforcement has mandatory retirement at age fifty-seven. So when I turned fifty-seven, I had to retire from that job, but ended up getting a position at the US Attorney's Office in North Carolina doing forensic accounting on their criminal cases, and then testifies an expert in federal court on, uh, financial records, and so, you know, that's a good part of my background, and, and I want to let you know that, you know, I've, I've moved back in the area, I live in Davis County now. So I'm available, if there's any needs for somebody with my background, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, step to plate. I'm retired, so I got time on my hands, and my wife would be glad I, I get out of her hair for a while. You know, that, that's, uh, yeah, anybody got questions or anything, I'm.
Yeah, oh, sounds good, I guess if we ever need anything reviewed, I guess we can keep you in mind.
I would, uh, leave your contact information with Patty, where she's got it.
Patty Ball's our.
I think I did leave that with her, uh, the thing I need to know, when you're looking at that, all I've got is a cell phone. And the area code is a nine-one-two, not eight-one-two. We got these numbers in Georgia, and everybody kept telling us, don't change those numbers, because that's what everybody's got, so that, that's, that's what it is, we just have to let people know that it's.
That's getting more and more, a lot, a lot of people have different state phone numbers anymore, so. I appreciate it.
Great, thanks, thank you so much.
Thanks, Ken. All right, anybody else have anything for Commissioners this morning?
Michael.
Yeah.
One quick issue from the Auditor's Office that we need to address publicly is the, um, Steel Benefits that we've been in open enrollment. And, um, so there was an issue that came up during it, you know, when we do transitions, there's always something that catches you off guard. So one of the things that, um, was an issue for some employees was the current Aflac policies that they have.
The individual, individual policies.
Right, the individual policy, so our goal, we are switching to an Aflac group policy. Our goal was that no one would lose their prior policies, and that is intact, there's no problem with that. And then moving forward, um, just asking for your direction, uh, I sent you an email, I believe, yesterday stating that we can manually manage those individual policies, and there's no issue with that. I talked to Steel Benefits, and our office is, um, able and willing to carry that through. It will not be on the enro- enroll, open enrollment website, that was hard to say. But, um, so, but grandfathered as those people.
I had Patty look that up, there was, there's still twenty-five employees, that was still on the individual plans. And I don't think, I don't think we need to change anything, the county's, but, you know, with that, but those will be grandfathered in, so nobody else will be able to add to those individual plans. And then as attrition comes along, then they retire and move on, then, then nothing else gets, they just slowly drop off until it's back to zero again on the individual plans.
And we can.
Forward will be on the group plan then.
We can easily manage that, so that's not a, a huge issue for my office.
You guys have any comments on that?
If it was me, I'd send out a notice and, and ask them to consider taking it on themselves, but the ones that go on to continue to.
There, there was a couple of conflicts, and that's my, that was our thought at first, you know, there is conflicts with that, because like on a cancer policy or something like that, that's health-related, you can't get that pre-tax on your salary. Taxes, so, then, so if you, if you multiply it out by twenty-four payments a year, some of it gets pretty pricey. So, it's, you know, you would be taking money away from our employees, so, we can just keep it on there, and, and the Auditor's Office is willing to step up to do that. I appreciate you guys for doing that, but, uh, I think that would make everybody happy being, and nobody loses anything. There's no value lost from, from our employees.
Well, that's our goal, is, is to, um, enhance the technology and the digital to all employees. We don't want to harm someone with, you know, a slight difference in this, so we'll manage both systems for as long as we need to.
I appreciate you guys still taking on that task, that way I just don't want to, you know, if, if twenty-five of those individuals stay there, they stay there, but with this open enrollment, we may lose some of those individual.
Yeah, they'll have the option, they can.
They got the option.
With the group, or they can maintain their individual plans.
At the end of the day, after the open enrollment's done, how many we still got on that list? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks Patty. Does anybody else?
No.
Ron?
Nope.
All right, if not, look for a motion to pay payroll, like, like, pay claims, anything to talk this morning, then enjoyment. Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor. Thank you, everybody, thanks for coming today.
Wow.
That sounds like fun.